How Glanville.
Here.
JR Huddleston.
Here.
Deborah Johnston.
Here.
Bill Lukin.
Here.
Travis Warbach.
Here.
Larry Krack.
Here.
Gary Telkamp.
Here.
Linda Varvel.
Here.
Thank you.
Would you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Remember, counsel, if you have a conflict of interest, please let the rest of the council know before you vote. Can I get a motion to approve an amended agenda? The first item is new business item E. And we're striking the city share approximately $33,500. That amount goes with a different item, not this one. And then we're adding an executive session under codified law 1-25-23 contractual matters that will be at the end of the meeting.
Make a motion to approve an amended agenda. Amendment to item E, striking city share approximately $33,500 and adding executive session 1-25-23 contractual matters.
Second.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the February 3rd council meeting?
I make a motion to approve the minutes from the February 3rd, 2025 council meeting.
Second. Misty, I believe you had a clarification on that for the council?
Yes, I just wanted to clarify for those of you wondering, we did mention at the last meeting that we would revisit the ordinances regarding the medical cannabis dispensary hours. We mentioned that that would be on a future council meeting, and it's not on this agenda because we did not identify at the time, but we need to follow the legal process with public hearings to revise those ordinances. Since there were significant ordinance changes between the ones that we presented to you that did not pass and the new ones, it is necessary that we hold public hearings at both P&amp;Z and City Council again before those ordinances can be read for first and second readings. I proposed a timeline that includes P&amp;Z setting a public hearing at their meeting tomorrow. They meet monthly, so the public hearing will be at their March 19th meeting. If you're interested in attending the P&amp;Z public hearing, it should be at 6:10 on the 19th of March. And then council, after they get a recommendation from P&amp;Z, then at our first meeting in April, off the top of my head, I think it's the 6th, we will set a public hearing and then can have that at our second meeting in April and the first reading of the ordinance. So for those of you interested in that, that's the new timeline.
So it has to go through committee again?
It has to go through public notice and hearings again because it is a different ordinance than what was proposed.
Well, you said P&amp;D?
P&amp;Z, Planning and Zoning, and council.
So it's gonna, that's a committee, right?
Yes.
So it's gonna go through committee again?
They have to have a public hearing for zoning ordinance revisions, and so do we.
But that wouldn't have been, we wouldn't have needed that if we would have approved it the last time?
The way it was written.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Before we get on to our claims, I'd just like to once again remind council that your microphones are your friends. Don't be afraid of them. Get up close and personal. I want to make sure the public hear us, and especially we want to make sure that we're coming through loud and clear when people watch us on YouTube, so. Can I get a motion to approve the bills in between?
I make a motion to approve the bills in between for $210,555.19.
Second. JR. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Can I get a motion to approve the current claims?
I make a motion to approve the current claims of $37,037.33.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. And can I get a motion to approve the 2024 payable claims?
Make a motion to approve 2024 payable claims, $61,949.93.
Second. Take Gary. Discussion?
Loudly.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Brings us to communications from the public. Is there anyone that would like to address council tonight? Oh goodness.
Hi, council, I'm Jason Yedd. I'm the president of Southern Hills Recreation. I live in rural South Dakota. I'm also building a house here in town on South Garden Street. You guys have seen our mess.
And just to remind you, Jason, you have five minutes.
Five minutes, I'll try to make sure I can say any of that. I think I should be able to. We are working, Southern Hills Recreation, with Hot Springs Disc Golf to try to expand the course at Butler Park. We've gone through committee with Parks and Rec and have their recommendation. I think that'll come up later on in committee notes to approve the concept of a plan. What we are asking the council for, and I'm here to answer any questions you guys have, this is to get on next agenda so that you guys can have an agenda item at the next meeting. We would like to have approval to move forward. We need to start fundraising and start the design of the course. To do that, we want to make sure that it's approved by council for us to move forward with that process. So that's kind of what I'm here for. I guess some of you guys, this might be the first time you're hearing of this, so any questions you might have, I'm happy to answer. Otherwise, some of the committee members are aware of this.
What's the area in...
So there's three existing. There was a project back in, I think, 2016 and 2017. They put in three baskets, but they never got tee pads and they never continued the course past that. Those are on the northwest side of the park. One by the restroom up there, one kind of by the pavilion by the horseshoe pits, and then one kind of between the tennis courts and the softball field. So we kind of designed a layout for 18 holes around the entire park, starting with those. From what Parks and Rec recommended, we start with, it was to start with a nine-hole course and started on the southeast corner where there's more open space and less conflict. So we're kind of master planning to incorporate all 18 if it's a success and the community really enjoys having the course that close to town. But for now, it would be nine holes, starting kind of at the soccer field area and then wrapping around to the opposite southwest corner of the park.
And how many players do you anticipate having and/or teams?
It's hard to tell. This would be open to the public, so it's a community park. Disc golf is the second fastest growing sport in America at the moment, so I did send a packet over to Jaclyn with some of that base information about the sport and kind of the energy that's there. It's a sport that anyone can play. You can play by yourself if you have a disc. You can bring a couple friends. So it's very flexible. It really is a very approachable sport. It's a lifetime sport that kids can learn. But we've had a lot of, especially veterans here in town, say that it would be great to have that availability just to get out, get some fresh air, walk the course, and get around it.
Are these fixed structures or are they removable?
They're removable. They have a lock at the bottom and they slide right off the sleeve. I believe the ones that are up there now are that way as well. So they are removable. It is, we've kind of talked about that before, it is pretty low impact on the park. It's a teapot at one end and a basket at the other end. They're pretty easy to move around if we decide, you know, one hole just isn't working well for the park or we need to make adjustments. So we're happy to help with that process as well.
I was able to look at some of the stuff that she emailed me, coming back and having this conversation with us so that we can have a real discussion about this, plus in parks. There are some things that need to be addressed, like what Bill asked, if you pull those out of the ground, are they gonna have something on top of them? There's a lot of things insurance-wise, so, yeah.
Yeah, I'm happy to answer any of those questions that you guys have. Obviously, we do have the three up there already in there. Each manufacturer has a little difference, but they are there, available to be looked at.
I don't remember if Parks started it or you emailed me, but I did get some guidance from our insurer too about establishing the park, so if anybody's interested in that, I'd be happy to forward it.
Yeah, they did have a lot of good suggestions, very similar to when we did the volleyball net up at the park. You know, making sure that things are maintained properly, have a regular inspection, but it really goes towards all the facilities that are up at the other park to make sure that, you know, there's not an unsafe condition with equipment that's not maintained.
Anyone else?
No.
Larry and Linda, I believe you're addressing this in your parks report tonight?
It's a little blurb about it, but that's the reason why Jaclyn wanted him to come up tonight to at least give us heads up on what's gonna happen, go down, and we can have that conversation again and go that direction.
All right.
Thank you, Mayor.
Anyone else? Thank you, Jason.
Thanks, Jason.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Daniele Rose. I'm a licensed addiction counselor.
What is your address, ma'am?
1738 Albany Avenue, Hot Springs. I'm a licensed addiction counselor, a licensed clinical social worker, and an auricular acupuncturist. So I have some education and experience in the field that I'm going to talk about briefly in support of what the council has been doing. The first is cannabis causes amotivational syndrome. And I took this from the Substance Abuse Encyclopedia. I made one copy. If the board wants to have a copy, read a copy of the extensive description, I could leave this with you. But amotivational syndrome is just a fancy word for couch potato. But the more important thing that I wanted to talk about briefly is cannabis smoke is very dangerous for children because the chemical compound formula for THC is quite similar to the brain growth hormone formula. So when children are around secondhand smoke of cannabis, it gets into their brain and the brain essentially says, "Oh, I don't have to spit out any growth hormone because it's already there", misinterpreting the THC formula. And so the child's brain has holes in it. And granted, the brain has elasticity and some other part of the brain may take over that function, perhaps. But I just wanted to express to the council and to the listening public that secondhand smoke from cannabis is extremely dangerous for our children. That's all I have.
Counsel, do you have any questions?
I'm sorry, I did not get your name.
My name is Daniele Rose.
Okay, thank you.
Is it D-A-N-E L?
D-A-N-I-A-L-L-E.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Anyone else?
Good evening. Wally Keschro. I live on Valley View Line 106. I have a question for council of here. If I put a building next to the Valley View, I gotta have a petition over there, vote, go to planning zoning. We have a neighbor, Mr. Sweat, he joined our door with any petition, anybody ask nothing. Who responsible for that?
Ultimately, I would be.
Well, he drive big truck with the equipment, you know, construction equipment, nails on the road, knocking the sign. Well, he owns the town or what?
So we've had this conversation, Wally. You know he's in the county. Currently, we don't have any authority. We're looking into jurisdictional territory and what we can do there, but he's in the county right now. Yes, he's your next-door neighbor, but as far as coming to us at this point, that hasn't been something that he's been required to do. So that's why I say ultimately it's me, but our ordinances don't address county residents.
Yeah, but the city should have ordinance three miles out of the city limit.
And that's what we're looking into with our attorneys.
Do I have to go to the planning zoning committee or what, to find out?
You can go to them, and you're gonna hear the same answer. They meet tomorrow night. It's open to the public, and you're certainly welcome to address them if you'd like to.
I'll be there.
All right.
Couldn't he go to the county commissioners?
With the county, they don't hurt county, they hurt town.
But didn't you say he was in the county?
He can certainly address it with the county commissioners also. Anybody that's been around Fall River County for a long time knows that the county commissioners and building codes...
They don't have it.
They're not friends. But you're asking us what we can do about it and right now?
City can stop him to join the road.
We're looking into that, Wally. We've had this conversation.
But I know the longer he go, the more he doing. He driving like a big truck hauling behind his pickups over there and then...
I don't know that we can stop...
They destroy the road.
It's a cross...
And we fixing.
Yeah, I know where it is. But I don't know that we can stop people from driving on our roads. They're public roads.
And that's a dead-end road also. So it's not like you need for communication or something like that. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Wally. Anyone else? That brings us to council updates. Dr. Kylie Combo, Hot Springs High School Superintendent, asked her to come talk with us about the school resource officer contract that's with the city that will be expiring on March 1st. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Kylie Combo, the new superintendent. Thank you very much for having me. A couple things I wanted to talk about with the SRO program because I know we are going to be making a decision soon on the fate of that program. My comments would be no different than any other school district that has the benefit of an SRO program. I would not know one school district that would say that there would be a negative impact of having an SRO in the school setting. I firmly believe that it's a very positive and proactive effort that a school district or a city could give to the youth in the community. I also believe that it gives a sense of safety to students, to parents, to staff, be that perceived or not. It is very important for that sense of safety. Also, another benefit is the consistent police personnel that we are able to work with instead of calling dispatch and getting another officer every time there might be an issue at the school. We have a consistent person that is very familiar with juveniles and juvenile laws and has built those relationships with our students and the family. I wanted to share a survey that I did not send out, but was sent out by a business manager collecting information on SRO programs. And 30 school districts within the state answered that. And just so we are aware of where those 30 districts sit as far as funding, 10 of the 30 school districts, they have full payment for the SRO. Seven, the city or the county fully pays for it. The other 10 is split, half and half. And then three that responded to this lost the position within their school district due to funding. One of those includes Pier, where I came from. We no longer had a school resource officer in a district of about 2,800 students. So I just wanted to share, when I talked with Mayor Nelson, we realized that the SRO contract came to an end in March, which we thought was a very unique time to start a contract in a school setting. When I've talked to our business manager, we did send the second half of the payment to the city, and so we have paid for the full contract, our portion of it, for the school year. So even though the contract ends March 1, the payment has been received through May. So just when you have that discussion, know that the payment has been received in full for the school year 2425. So moving on to year 2526 and moving forward, you hopefully have seen a proposed contract from the school district, just being very upfront and honest. I know that the city is rolling in money and you have an overabundance in your budget. The school is not feeling that way. We actually have a deficit, and I know you do too. But challenges with that of how do you provide for the city, how do you provide for your students what's best with not as many funds? And the SRO program continues to be a priority for us for the reasons that I shared and probably more. However, the contract that we have proposed is what the school district can offer at this point. Reality for us is that base pay for our teachers is under $45,000. And we also, as an education system, we are supposed to be guaranteed 3.5% from the state as an increase for funding, and that does not always happen. Happened this year. We are going to get 1.25% increase, and so our teachers and staff typically do not get the cost of living increase, so our staff will just be getting a 1.25% increase. So the contract, as you know, is presented, is probably not ideal, but it is where we're coming from financially. Do you have any questions for me?
I was wondering who told you we were rolling in money, but then you clarified that you know we're not either, so... No.
Counsel, any questions? Not at this time.
Yes, ma'am.
No.
Last week, I've been told that you've instigated, I think it's called the E3.
Yep, an emergency communication tool.
Is that just a case?
Yes. When I, that is, when I started here with the school district, soon realized that we do not have one tool or intercom system that can reach all of our classrooms in case of an emergency. So that became a priority. So we have purchased the tool, which was approximately $4,500. Don't quote me on that, but around $4,500 annually so that we can communicate with our staff. Actually, we have a training tomorrow with all of our emergency personnel in the community so that they also have access to that.
That doesn't, it alerts the staff, but doesn't it also alert the police station and the sheriff's department?
Correct.
So everybody shows up at one time?
Mm-hmm.
I believe it was at the safety committee meeting, we were given, excuse me, a graph of how many calls the SRO took in the previous year, and it was quite extensive. So there's definitely a need, and it certainly is a help to our police force not having to get pulled from the rest of town on such a frequent basis.
I've seen that data too. Good data to have to support the importance of an SRO program because those calls are still going to be made. And like I said, and I experienced it in Pier, when you don't have an SRO officer and you call dispatch, more than likely, you're gonna get a different officer every time. And you kind of have to learn their style, how they respond, their comfort level with youth, and so forth, so...
And you've put a lot of money into supporting sending him for extensive trainings throughout the last year for that specific position.
Absolutely.
That the other officers don't have that under their belt.
Correct.
So...
Correct.
There's been a lot invested in this.
Yep, and to find an adult that can tolerate, youth is just as important as finding an educator that wants to be in the classroom. So a lot of policewomen and men prefer to be on the street, and it's very unusual to find one that wants to be in the school setting. So we appreciate Mr. Officer McMillan.
Anyone else? I just want to make sure that I'm understanding what you said correctly about the current contract. It's paid up through May. This contract, the current one, would expire March 1st, but there isn't a necessity to get the contract renewed right away because the current one just will run through May.
Correct.
That gives us some time for council to discuss where they want to end up and get back with you and...
Correct. It was kind of a nice mistake to see the invoice that was paid and accepted. So the contract, like I said, has been paid in full for this school year, so we do have some time for further discussion.
Okay. Well, I certainly sense this is something council wants to make a decision on, so we know where we're gonna be on that.
Okay.
We'll have those necessary conversations, and we'll stay in touch.
Okay. Thank you. I'm gonna go decide if we're having school tomorrow.
Okay. On to personnel. Can I get a motion to approve personnel actions A through D?
I make a motion to approve personnel actions A through D.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. On to our resolution. Can I get a motion to approve resolution 2025-7?
Make a motion to approve resolution 2025-7, a resolution to support the Christmas in the Hills Committee Light Up Our Town campaign.
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, I got some questions about this. Honestly, what is gonna be our cost of this? I mean, so far, we're kind of giving money away to different organizations and waiving fees, so I'm just concerned about, that's a joke too, but I'm kind of concerned about what we're, what it was gonna cost us.
Karen?
Hi. There is no dollar cost to this particular resolution this year. There have been two previous resolutions that deal with the same thing, one in 2015 and one in 2016. 2015, it was a $500 contribution from the city. 2016, it was a $1,000 contribution. This year, we are not asking for any money. However, there will be a cost in terms of labor, as there has been every year, for the city workers to put up the decorations and to take down the decorations.
And of course, the electricity expense.
And the electricity, sure. Although I will say that we've now moved over to, I think everything's LED now, so I don't think the cost of electricity is very significant anymore. For LED.
Yeah, it's hard to define what part is specifically tied...
Yeah, it's hard to define what part is specifically tied to those lights, but we pay a pretty penny for our electricity.
I'm sure you do.
What I'm saying too is, I've got a letter from our ma'am here, and what concerns me is something for a approval for $750 from the council.
Nope, that was removed.
No, we're not asking for any dollar amount this year.
You're not asking. Okay. That's all I wanted to know.
So this, this is just the continued routine support that our city staff provides?
Yes, and in addition, there is a separate account set up that Misty set up back in 2015 to take contributions. And so the important thing to look at is on your resolution, that last paragraph, that's what you're agreeing to, and that's all. The other stuff follows where it is our mainly history. So that account that has been set up allows for us to go to various organizations that have money for grants and things like that, to ask for money to pay for these decorations, and that money will go directly to the city, and the city owns the decorations. So we're basically out there, we're agreeing to recommend the decorations to the city via Jaclyn, and then we're agreeing to go out and fundraise to pay for those decorations.
Okay, and my second, next question is, a couple of sessions ago, we did vote on our city workers. So how is this going to affect that? Are we going to waive that? Are we going to charge for our city workers to be doing this? Is this anything to do with this contract or not? This is a question for you, Mayor.
Yeah. Well, the resolution that you're talking about, we had the discussion that for these types of situations and the discussion-only item that will be under new business, I felt it was important to put the language in there, that council, you give yourself the authority to waive those fees if it's a direct benefit to the city. So that's your call to make, whether you feel Christmas decorations in Hot Springs are a direct benefit to the city and what that's worth to you.
Right.
Following up on that question, that's, you started Larry, what I highlighted in here in the last paragraph that you're talking about, Karen, is City of Hot Springs will partner with Christmas in the Hills by participating in the effort. And my understanding is the participation in the effort would be using the city staff to put up the lights and take the lights back down. Is that...
Yes, and also with the account to receive the money.
Okay.
So does this waive, in your opinion, does this waive the application for use, the resolution that was passed at the last council meeting?
I guess I see this as city employees doing work for the city. They're putting up Christmas lights anyway. This resolution is about purchasing the lights. That's a practice that our city has undertaken for years. It's a task they're doing for us, not necessarily for them. They're helping us fundraise to have more, but this is a city task for a city function with city-owned lights. I don't see this as, that resolution addressed requests from third-party organizations to have city workers do things for their benefit.
Yeah. If, if, if we want Billy to put Christmas lights up on my house...
That's different.
That's, that's when either the council approves that her bill pays for it, but this is, the city street owns the streetlights, the city owns the lights.
It's a task we regularly...
Yeah, it's, it's a normal thing.
And I just want to put this all out there in case there's questions later from, you know, because questions always come up later, so, you know.
This also extends the time that the lights are up from past, because you want to keep...
It does.
... the wintertime rather than just the holiday.
Yes, the decorations that are being recommended are all winter decorations, not specifically Christmas decorations, although people would consider them Christmas decorations, but not solely Christmas, as are the current decorations that were bought in 2015 and 2016. Those are the snowflakes. And so we'll be purchasing more of that type of decoration to make sure we have it for the entire area. And I want to thank Misty for, for kind of putting this in perspective. Most cities have responsibility for decorating during the holidays and the wintertime. And also, I wanted to mention the timeline. When these decorations were put up in 2015 and 16, they were in fact up for longer. It's only been more recent that they've been taken down earlier. And so we're kind of trying to go back to what the initial project was intended to be, and that was through the winter holidays when the sun is not around nearly as many hours as we'd like. So just give it a little bit more cheer. And the idea is especially so that when we come into town, we're greeted with, with those kinds of decorations from both ends, and then as you come around the corners into the historic district, we want to have a bigger splash there as well. We're still working on what to do about decorations on the sidewalk, the suspended sidewalk area. That's a great opportunity. But again, most cities are responsible for this. What happened historically is back in 2012, actually, one of the Christmas in the Hills members was driving through town in the middle of the winter and said, "My gosh, these decorations are pathetic, and we should do something about it." And she made a proposal, and there just wasn't the staff, we didn't have the people on our committee, and we weren't able to follow through, and she moved away. We reinvigorated that in 2015, and we've stuck with it, except for during the time with the construction. So we want to follow through and finish that. But otherwise, we would have been having citizens saying, "Hey, city, it's time for you to do something about buying some more decorations." And we stepped up and said, "There's not a lot of money in the city. This is something we can do and we want to do." So I'm always interested that people wonder why, you know, are we doing this or that for the city? Well, what we're doing is giving you money and stuff. And it's stuff you get to approve and you own.
Here's another thought too. Keep Hot Springs Beautiful is putting lighting in Centennial Park. Did you all think about maybe partnering with them?
Well, let me correct the record here. Christmas in the Hills is the one who started that. Back in 2015, we went to every group in town, including Keep Hot Springs Beautiful, and we did a pitch, and we said, "Hey, here's what you could do. You can give us money, you can give us your support, and just talk about it, and you can give us labor." And they said they wanted to give us labor and support, and they wanted to take the responsibility for an area. And they chose Centennial Park, and, and they contributed money to do that. And so Keep Hot Springs Beautiful is doing that under the auspices of Light Up Our Town, under the auspices of Christmas in the Hills.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I for one can support this resolution.
Can I ask a question? Regarding the five-month period, if we pass this resolution, does that, in your opinion, tie us into that timeframe? Because one of the things I'd like to see is some flexibility for our city to determine the period of time each year that's appropriate to have those lights up. Not I want to see them up only for a month or only during the Christmas season, but I'm just a little concerned with the five months out of 12-month period that's in this resolution.
Right, which would be November through March. Actually, the thing that I really care most about in terms of the five months is the banners, which don't require any cost at all, and will be, winter, the, the design that's going to be recommended is a red banner with snowflakes on it, and also a red one with tree, a tree on it, white tree, white snowflakes. And those, we're going to fund those by, by asking various people to sponsor them, mainly businesses. And I want to be able to say to them, "You're going to have five months of your name someplace in town sponsoring this," and, and that will be easier for them to justify in their budget. And some of that money will be able to be used to pay for some of these other decorations as well. So that's what I care most about.
We're not going to nitpick over months if the people that put them up or take them down need to take them down a few weeks earlier because they have projects or anything.
No, no, no. I would think we're still going to need to look at weather. I mean, I assume that's what the city does right now, and that they're going to want to put them up at a time when it's not the kind of weather we have today, and they're going to want to take them down in the same way.
So it doesn't fix us to that?
No, no.
I also just want to note and make sure that the putting them up and taking them down is not directly coming from Christmas in the Hills and Light Up Our Town to our employees, and that it still does need to be filtered through the proper channels within...
I'm not sure I understand the question. All the lights and decorations are put up by the city or taken down, except for the ones on the trees and in, in the shelters in Centennial.
Right. I'm just noting it. I'm making sure that, that it's noted that any work done by the city employees despite this resolution is filtered through the proper channels.
Yes.
So it doesn't go directly from Light Up Our Town to our city employees?
No, no, no. We never, yes. We never have them. We wouldn't. It's always gone through the city administrator. Thank you.
Anyone else? So I'm, I'm glad to hear what you folks are talking about. Larry asked the question about waiving fees because of the last resolution, and I wouldn't be at all surprised that future council, you know, if they're aware of that resolution, may say, "Well, should we, you know, be doing this, or should we be charging fees?" So I just wanted to have the open conversation that I think, you know, the city staff, that's why, the participating in the effort, that's, that's what we should be doing, and there shouldn't be any costs associated with lighting up our town for Christmas, as far as the hours or equipment that the city puts into doing it. That's our part of the festivities.
He said it better than I did.
I just wanted to have that open discussion.
He, he said it better than I did. Seldom.
I won't take it personally.
And it belongs to us.
Yes, everything belongs to you. Everything is ordered through you. Well, we've been getting quotes and so on. We, all the quotes now have Jaclyn, the City of Hot Springs name on it, care of Jaclyn, and so any orders, any signatures, any of that stuff will have to go through the city. And all the money, the only money that will be spent on this is the money that is in that account that is specifically for Light Up Our Town. And so we'll fund, we'll make sure we get a balance in there, and then they'll only write checks from that account.
We have a dollar six in there right now.
A dollar six? Oh, good. We kept enough in to keep it open.
And it's not a special account anyway. It's just a restricted equity account in our software.
Thanks, Karen.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Onto new business. Our first new business, Item A, is a discussion-only waiving of Centennial Park fees for the Chamber of Commerce. And Josh, the Director of the Chamber of Commerce. So we had this conversation at Admin Finance. Josh was good enough to join us there, and I'd ask him to come to the meeting tonight and kind of go over what he talked with Admin Finance about, and give the rest of the council opportunity to ask any questions.
Yeah, so we, this actually started as a conversation between the mayor and I. I caught him in the Mueller Center one day. It was purely out of curiosity more than anything, but, you know, obviously, the chamber receives the bulk of our funding through 80% of the LLD tax money that comes in. And I had, I had recently, just before I'd seen the mayor, I had recently put in my park reservations, including our new summer concert series, and by the time I've got everything reserved with electricity, it came to $1,000, $1,075. And I just happened to ask him, I said, "You know, you guys, you give us money to fulfill the chamber's mission, and then we schedule events, we build activities around to benefit the community, and then we reserve a park, and then we send money back to you versus using those funds for promotion, hopefully to bring more people into town?" And I just asked him what we thought about that. And that's how I've ended up in two more meetings than I bargained for. But, you know, we, we talked about it a little bit at Admin, Admin and Finance, and kind of the same conversation. And I understand there's probably some difficulty in trying to create policy that is fair and, you know, can be applied to everybody. However, I do think the Chamber of Commerce is sitting in kind of a unique position, and I think, given enough creativity that I see on the council in front of me, I think something could be created where that's something that could be, could be waived for the chamber. So I'm just kind of here to answer any questions you might have and to listen to your conversation. I know there's a lot of talk about money tonight, and it would have been a better meeting to have me at one where we weren't talking about money, but I don't think that happens very often, so. Questions for me?
Josh, are you, is a chamber, and I should know this, but I apologize that I don't, is it considered a for-profit organization?
We are not for-profit. We are a 501(c)(6) nonprofit.
Not that that matters in my decision-making, I just have a question for my understanding.
Yeah, we are not for-profit.
Does the Plunge and the Golf Course pay for chamber membership?
I know the Golf Course does not.
Because they're not a chamber member?
Right. Well, they get a...
In order to be a chamber member, do city organizations pay for chamber membership, even though we fund the chamber significantly?
I don't think, I don't think any of them do. Plunge, maybe? I don't know. I know the Golf Course doesn't, because I was looking at it today. City of Hot Springs is not a member. That's a really good question. I don't know about the Plunge. Golf Course does not, though. I was just in that today for our software conversion, and it's a zero. I thought it would have fallen under the City of Hot Springs, but there is no City of Hot Springs membership.
So in order to be a member, would we have to pay for that? Apparently, since you say there's no membership, then we're not paying.
Right, yeah. Well, I don't know that you'd have to. I mean, we have other members that don't pay. You know, we work all in exchange with Shedco. If that answers your question.
A little.
Anyone else?
If I put a mean try and word my words correctly here, so it'll insult you, sir.
Yeah.
I know the city has discretionary to make decisions for this, to waive or not. So many different organizations, whether they're profit or nonprofit, you know, you're right. It's a, it's a hard decision to make. It's not an easy decision to make. I hear what you're saying, what road you're going down with this mentally. But for me, it's, man, you got to be, you know, either we do this for everybody or we don't. Because, you know, if you can bring more money in and I can't, but you get waived and I don't, I mean, how fair is that? You know, I mean, a comment can be made that, you know, "I bring a lot of revenue to this town." Well, to me, that's saying, what are you entitled to? You know?
Yeah.
And it's not meant to insult you. It's just reality.
Larry, you can't insult me. I mean, I'm not adversarial in my position at all.
No, 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 no.
I mean, we've got a, the chamber and the city has a great working relationship.
Right. It's just that, you know, I look at it in that, in that mannerism, and I'm thinking, we got to be fair to everybody. I, I feel like I have to be fair to everybody. I can't speak for the rest of this council, but I feel like I have to be fair to everybody. If we're going to do it for you, then we got to do it for everybody else. And there will be people that will want to come up and don't want to do this.
Yeah.
You know, so that's just my take on it personally. I don't reflect what the council, okay?
Yeah. Which is, which is fine. I respect your opinion. I, I think that, from my standpoint, you know, if, if we're going to pay a fee, you know, what does that fee go to exactly? Does it go into the general fund? Does it go into improvements at the park?
Pays for all of the general fund expenses. Pays for all of the general fund expenses, libraries, police department, parks, all of it.
Yep. You know, without being, sounding petty or whatever, I mean, we have our balloon festival down there, we pay a fee, and then we get the privilege of contracting with city employees to cover bathroom cleaning, garbage pickup. I got to bring in another dumpster because they told me they can't get their trailer down in there with all those people to pick up trash. So if I'm gonna, I have to buy toilet paper, you know, make sure our bathrooms down there are stocked. You know, I gladly would pay fees, without question, if I didn't have to sweep off concrete when I use a shelter, when I didn't have to scrape food off of the picnic tables when I reserved a shelter. I mean, there's, you know, there's a lot of things that, you know, we take care of You know, that's why you guys get to make the decision, I just get to go along with what you say, but...
Yeah, and I guess, if I can, I apologize if I'm interrupting you, Josh, but, you know, the electrical use fee, I think that's for anybody that's using it, and I think that's appropriate if you're using electric tools, you want to pay for the electric tools.
We talked about that.
And, you know, the park usage fee, and I'm looking at Misty and the mayor to make sure I'm not misstating something, when you reserve the park, that's because, that way you get exclusive use. That way, if I would decide I want to have Hal's birthday party that same day, I don't get to have it because you haven't reserved, and that's kind of what your, the reservation gets you, is exclusive use. Now, if there's some maintenance issues that you're having to deal with, then we probably need to know about that so that we can take care of that. And so those administrative things, that's really what, you know, and the exclusive use, that's, that's what any organization is buying, if you will. And are we trading dollars? That's kind of the, to me, that's the head-scratcher with an organization that's 80% funded by city funds, and, but, you know, the, and I don't have an answer, you know, it's still, there's still a cost incurred by the front desk ladies to do the reservation, and, you know, there's time and effort, so, yeah. If you came with us, came to us with looking for an easy answer, you failed.
I would remind you, we have to, our city functions pay our water and sewer utilities for their service. So taking dollars from one place to another when it's appropriate is, it's accurate, it's the correct way to do things. So whether we help support or fund, even in our own city, our own functions, we still do those things, so.
Yeah, so it's, and to me, you know, profit, nonprofit, doesn't matter. I'm an, I have a nonprofit that I rent the Mueller Center Annex every Sunday, doesn't matter. I pay my rent, I don't, I haven't filed the paperwork so that I'm tax exempt, so I also pay the sales tax for it, so, but that's, that doesn't matter. You know, I'm an organization, I lease space, I pay the rent, Chris smiles when I hand him the check. End of discussion, so, yeah.
Is the park reservation fee, and this might be better suited for Misty, is that $50 daily, then $25 for electricity daily? Just a flat fee?
Yes.
Per shelter, yeah.
Pardon?
Per shelter.
Per shelter, yeah, thank you.
Josh, did you get a copy of the concerns that I shared with the council regarding the, okay?
I did, yeah.
And I would, I would ask if any of you had any questions about that, if that was clear, and I'm glad you got a copy of that, because I would agree, we have a great working relationship, and we want to keep it that way. So I hope that came across well to understand our position.
I mean, you were quoting Thomas Jefferson, so, I mean...
Let me just read that for the public.
That's hard to compete with.
"A wise and frugal government shall not take from the mouth of labor the bread it has earned."
Oh, and I read it, "should not take from the chamber." I read it a little different.
That's not what he said, Josh.
Anyone else?
One quick question about, we are not members.
The, you are, you are not, the City of Hot Springs is not, they do not get charged a membership. They are not on there. You get complimentary listings in publications through the chamber, but you do not pay for a membership, yes.
Thank you.
Just to clarify a question that was asked earlier, the Plunge is a member also.
And they do pay for it?
They do pay for it.
Now, I'd like to know the history on that.
Yeah.
Used to be private, and it just carried over?
Is this kind of a conundrum that hasn't ever been asked before, Misty?
What's that?
What he's presenting?
No. No, I wouldn't say so. I'd say we have a great working relationship with the chamber that's never come up for it.
No, 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 what I'm saying is wanting to waive the fees, because if this hasn't never been addressed before in the past councils, then this is probably a new ground that needs to be looked at and talked about and discussed with the councils on.
That's what you're doing.
But, yes, I know that part about, but you know what I'm saying.
They have paid fees in the past.
Yes.
They've paid the park reservation fees in the past.
But he's asking to waive those fees. That's what I'm asking.
That's what's happening, yep.
Have we been consistent all along here? We've been waiving fees for some people from time to time?
That's never my recommendation.
I think we've said, the question has been asked from some organizations in the past, and we've said, consistently said no, I believe, since I've been on council.
I just want to make sure that we're consistent. We have been since I've been on council, which has been very consistent, yeah.
We've had a lot of asks along the way, and, like, you know, Keep Hot Springs Beautiful is another one, you know, Light Up Our Town, Christmas in the Hills.
Arts and crafts festivals.
Yeah, Keep Hot Springs Beautiful, I mean, they're essentially our garden department. I mean, they're our landscapers. They do a lot of work, and then they have their rummage sale here, and they have to pay Mueller Center fees, and they were asking those to be waived because of all the work they do for the city, but, so that was a big discussion, and again, we had to come down on the side of, well, we have all these other people that do stuff that's so wonderful for us as well, and, you know, I want to give everybody all of it.
Well, absolutely. And, I mean, I'm a little curious, and not to jump ahead on the agenda, but I'd like to see how the next item on the agenda works.
Exactly.
And I'm not here to, you know, steal money from Shedco or anything like that, but aren't we talking about waiving labor and a couple other things? But I was just...
The last, last meeting, we waived labor for up at the Butler Park.
Yeah.
So this time, it's kind of, the whole town was torn apart, and now the city needs to celebrate. So it's kind of a mutual, the city's part of the whole deal.
Yeah, absolutely. And that's the exact same reason I started the Salute to Valor Festival Memorial Day weekend, was to celebrate the road construction being done and open, so. I will be thrilled with whatever decision you guys make, it won't impact the chamber. I mean, we'll function like we always do and do a great job, but...
I would like to note, just because of the comment about the next item on the agenda, that the recommendation there, that those fees were like a total of maybe $150 max. I'm not saying it doesn't matter.
Sure.
But, I mean, that is significantly less than $1,075.
In the precedent.
Right, for park fees.
Yeah, and I think really when it jogged my, when it came into my forefront, was when we added the concert series with five more events downtown. Just those concerts are $625 I added up. So prior to that, the fees were, you know, kind of a blip on the radar, so...
Everything's gone up all over.
Nothing's cheap, nothing's cheap.
We're happy to have the added events.
Yeah, no, it'll be great, so...
We are very filled with gratitude for everything.
Oh, and I'm thrilled about the Shedco event, so don't get me wrong on my comments before either, but it, that's why I don't run for office. You guys are doing a great job.
It is not easy, is it?
No, it's terrible, Josh.
If you never ask, the answer will always be no, so...
Absolutely.
I mean, it still may be no, but at least you asked.
So anyone else? So my question is for you, Josh. You talked about, you named a number of the events that you had reserved, you know, Centennial Park for. You talked about the, could you just go over those events that you've scheduled?
Yep, so it's the Salute to Valor Festival Memorial Day weekend, it's going to be Friday through Monday. That's tying in with some longstanding events that have gone on over the years. We've added a parade, some stuff down in Centennial Park with a car show. Then we had our five concert dates down in Centennial Park. Then we have our balloon festival, which is two days, Friday and Saturday, with the vendor market, live music, Kid Zone with the Inflatables. And then, I believe the last one is Oktoberfest, which is the smallest event and only requires one half of the shelter rentals. The other events are big enough that I need kind of all that green space between the two shelters, so we reserved both of them. But those are, those are what we've got scheduled. Oktoberfest, up until this year, was a privately run by local businesses. This year, it became a full-fledged chamber event, with some wonderful polka music. But, yeah, those are the ones down in the park.
And I think you had mentioned that a number of those you're not generating any revenue on?
Well, the concerts in the park are free, free to the public. We're trying to work with local restaurants to come down and provide food inside the park versus bringing in food trucks. We will bring some food trucks, but, yeah, Balloon Fest is the one. We've got the roughly 24 vendors that come in, and we charge a fee for, and then the food trucks we charge for. Oktoberfest, we don't charge. And Salute to Valor, we won't be charging either.
So you're organizing events that the community benefits from?
I hope so, yeah, absolutely.
For me, council, I see this very similar to Shedco, and you've heard me advocate for Shedco during our budget meetings. There are things that a city needs to do for ourselves, and whether we do that in-house or whether we look to other organizations to help us do that. Economic development is huge. We can't afford to have a full-time economic development individual on staff, so we partnered with Shedco to do that for us. When we look at the Chamber of Commerce, in this particular situation, what they're asking for, for me, is very similar to promoting events or organizing events that we don't have the staff to organize. We simply don't. But the community benefits directly from the events that they're trying to put on. So, again, I'm going to go back to the ordinance or the resolution that you passed two weeks ago, giving you the flexibility to waive fees for things that this city directly benefits from. And I believe what the chamber and Josh are talking about are putting together events that the community and its residents will directly benefit from. So waiving a fee to do that? Yeah. That's what you would be asked to do, but it's in direct support of putting together events that this community will benefit from. When he talks about the balloon festival, anybody that's followed it for the last five or six years, see that this event is growing tremendously. Anybody that was at the nightclub the last time, there were probably 1,000 people down around North River Street. It's a huge event, and I've said it before, and I'm going to continue to say it, it's disappointing when we find ways to get in our own way.
All of our own way.
And I think that's what we would be doing, if we say that we can't be flexible and an organization that isn't generating any revenue on the events that they're organizing, but they are bringing to the community of Hot Springs, and our answer is, we can't waive a fee for that? We're getting in our own way and doing the right thing. That's my take on it.
Can I ask, last year with the balloon fest, did the city donate its personnel and equipment to support this event? Did the fees were waived for that?
Yes. We have, ever since the balloon fest has been taken off.
Did we waive the park fees?
I believe I...
I don't think we did. I think you paid your fair price.
I think I paid them.
Because you charge a fee to the vendors that show up and make some money on it, so...
Yeah.
But as far as our city crews helping organize the event or helping take bleachers out or whatever it may be to the airport, yes. We didn't charge anybody for those. But look at that event, when you're looking at around 2,500 people that are at the airport supporting that event, supporting Hot Springs, and coming into town, that's huge.
Many events.
So let's make our buck off of it, too.
Many events held at our parks benefit the community, so that would include things like the arts and crafts festivals, all-class reunions, the Fourth of July parties at the park. So if that's your opinion, this isn't the only fee that you'll be waiving. And that's not fair and consistent for the other people that have events if you don't.
But that is not my opinion. What we are talking about here is strictly waiving the fees, Centennial Park fees for the Chamber of Commerce. You have not heard me advocate for waiving fees for any other nonprofit organization that may be generating a revenue to support their organization. I have been advocating for waiving the fees for the Chamber of Commerce, who in my mind is very similar to Shedco. They are support, they are providing a service that we as a city don't have the staff or the revenue to do for ourselves. And they're stepping up and saying, "Hey, let us do it, but you can help us in this particular case if you waive the fees for it."
So in addition to waiving the park fees, would it be the intention to waive the fees again this year for the services from city, from the city and city employees to help, I guess, prepare for these events?
That's council's decision to make, but that's where I'm at.
So we're kind of seeing the Chamber of Commerce as really being kind of an extension of the city, and doing things that we can't do ourselves. Am I hearing that correctly?
I don't know if anyone else is saying that. I am.
I mean, did I understand, is that what I understand you?
I still feel like we need to also remember that we have a budget, and every year that we go to budget committee, that we cannot leave until we have a structurally balanced budget by codified law, and if we do not knock it off, we're going to be doing that again this year, going into the fourth night, a fifth night, trying to decide what to cut back, and our city keeps losing things that our workers need. So I understand what you're saying there, but this is where I feel about it on the bigger picture. We have a budget, and right now, we're not looking too good.
Well, to your point, Larry, we have not had a structurally balanced budget.
We haven't had one for a while.
Right, so I agree with you.
Yes, sir. We need to do what you said a few years ago, lights and water only, and that did help out a lot when you made that suggestion. And I think this needs to be part of the lights and water suggestion also, but that's, like you said, my opinion.
So this is kind of like letter of the law versus spirit of the law.
That's your call to make.
See how much fun we're having, sir?
I'm glad you think so, Larry.
We'll have our people call your people, and they'll do lunch, okay?
Yeah, we'll get our people together.
So in this conversation, again, I just need to say for me, I am not advocating for waiving any fees for... waiving any fees for any other nonprofit organizations that may generate a revenue to help support their, their work. Depending on what the request is, I might have a different opinion on it, but when we're looking at Chamber of Commerce and what you're bringing to the community with these events that you're organizing, that's where I landed. Anyone else?
Are we looking at the, are you, are you looking at the fees in their entirety, the entire $1,075, or, or is there a potential to separate that from the shelters and the electric costs? Is that, is that? It's $50, or it's, um, what?
$50 per day for the shelters and 25 for electricity.
Was that $1,075, was that for one event?
All of his, all of them for the year.
The whole year?
The whole, yeah.
So, just for example, the summer concert series, which right now the tentative dates are two dates in June, one date in July, and two dates in August, all Saturdays. It's for both shelters and the band shell is $625.
The, uh, the breakdown, shelters were, for the year, were $850. Electricity was $225.
Well, that's gonna give us a pretty good return on our money there. What would we be giving up?
No other groups would be able to use the, or, no other groups would be able to reserve the parks for events on those Saturdays.
Except for Oktoberfest, we just take the north shelter, but, and that's actually a Sunday.
Additionally, with the Balloon Fest, it's also $250 for two shelters and the electric for the two days. So, it's two shelters at $50 each for two days and the electric for two days, as well as, I'm not sure if council will support it or not in the future, but, um, last year, again, the fees were waived for the support with city personnel and their time and the equipment, so.
So, right now, we're only having discussion, we don't have to make a choice on this, and the reason why I'm saying this, because the temperatures are really dropping outside right now.
It's all relative when it's this low.
The only thing that I have to say, and I, I chair them in finance with Misty and folks, we're, we hemorrhaged a lot of money this last year, last few years, for this road project, and no fault of ours. But we have to look for every dime we can find and keep. This is gonna open a Pandora's Box.
Yes, sir.
And I'm afraid to say that we're gonna have argument after argument after argument that another group's fees should be waived. And in my opinion, and my opinion only, we need to act with fairness across the board in how we're gonna do this. And keep in mind, we need every nickel we can get. So, we can't keep approving a cost that comes in front of us through future appropriations. We can't do that. So, just chair's opinion only. I love what the Chamber does, do not get me wrong.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
You're a benefit to this community.
And we support the Chamber.
Absolutely, we do. Folks, just keep that in your mind, if you will, please.
Well, I brought up consistency earlier, and I totally agree with fairness. And I hear the mayor loud and clear, and I, quite frankly, I agree with him, but this is, and I agree with JR too, this is, this is a, this is kind of a dicey one. Didn't really give you my opinion, did I?
Thank you, sir.
So, what I'm taking from tonight's discussion is we need to have this on the agenda, or on a future agenda for council to vote on, to either waive the fees or not for the Chamber of Commerce, is, am I understanding that correctly?
You know, as Jaclyn kinda brought up and made me think, you know, we've, we've got the city parks that are there, and then we've got our city labor that's there, and we're paying them anyway, but we do have to pay the electric bill out of our pocket. So, I could see a compromise, if you will, of charging for the electricity, but, you know, allowing the use of the infrastructure of the town that's already there to support something that's supporting the town, as the mayor says. But we do have to pay that electric bill, so I could see making that fee not waivable. So, that's just another option.
Just briefly, Cheryl Colligan, I'm no longer on the Parks, or the Main Street Arts and Crafts Festival Committee after 30 years, but Main Street Arts and Crafts Festival, for 48 years, has had a line item in their budget, thanks to Beulah Donnell, for park improvements. And electricity and water, this down in Centennial Park right now, was originally put in there by Main Street Arts and Crafts Festival. Yes, now, that group is a 501(c)(3), so definitely not for profit. But if you think about what the Chambers bring into town with their activities, and once a year, Main Street Arts and Crafts Festival, what they bring to town, and it's not only the vendors and the taxes that they pay, but the people that come to town to rent a motel room and, and pay for gas to, to get to town. But yeah, they, Main Street's got a big budget for advertising to, to bring people in here, again, when there's a little construction in town. But, but yeah, uh, Main Street Arts and Crafts Festival, improvements to, to the park in some years, thousands of dollars, and, and other years, yeah, they're, the upkeep of, of the park, we definitely leave it cleaner than, than we found it. We also, in our budget, in, in their budget, Main Street Arts and Crafts Festival, they, they pay a contractor to take the garbage out, too. So, there's, yeah, you know, where I'm coming, where they're coming from is the money that they pay for park rental, that's less money that goes into park improvements.
All right. So, we'll figure out what the language needs to be to get this on an agenda for you to vote on, council?
Appreciate it, thank you, guys.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, can I get a motion to approve new business, item B, approve recommendation from the city administrator for use of city services personnel by Shedco?
Make a motion to approve recommendation from city administrator for use of city services and personnel by Shedco and waive, sorry, got my fees of all labor, fees and labor to construct a cone, cotton structure for end of construction celebration. My notes are in the way, I apologize.
Somebody else needs to read her notes.
The event date is weather dependent.
Second.
Second.
Larry, Larry got the second.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
You're gonna have to write in the back.
All right, discussion. So, Andrea addressed us a couple of weeks ago. So, council, do you have any other follow-up questions?
Okay, this was my understanding that this was just gonna be a one-time thing?
I hope so. No more road projects.
If I find something else to burn, I promise you that I will, in the future, recruit a volunteer team to do what needs to be done, and I appreciate your consideration.
I do just wanna note that since we were just talking about waiving fees, um, the estimated labor costs from start to finish lands between $195 and $260 total.
To three, I'm sorry. Say it again, please.
Uh, it's $195 to $260 total for the estimated time, estimated labor to construct this structure.
Yeah, I can see this being just a one-time thing, hopefully, we don't go through this ever again in our lifetimes, anyway. And definitely is a celebration the city needs to have.
And this item was discussed at the Safety Committee meeting, and JR will have a report during committees that the committee found no, or felt that all safety concerns were addressed during our discussion, and that Andrea had talked with the appropriate people, and, um, the emergency manager, Darko, was there and felt that everything had been addressed so that there shouldn't be any issues.
And Andrea, that, uh, I told you at Safety that this is just an ideal situation for some of our business owners that have not had the opportunity to have good business come in and while all the time the construction's going on. It's almost, they can get down there and burn, cone, burn, you know? However, again, there's a fee. Again, there's probably something we're not gonna see in labor. How do we do this in a sense of fairness? I'd be willing to pay the fee, that's how good I feel about her idea, that I would be willing to pay the fee personally, so we can have this event.
And I really, I really appreciate that, JR, and, um, knowing now the cost that it's gonna be, I can't speak for my board, but I'm fairly confident that they would be happy to pay for it, um, in light of the conflict that it seems to be causing.
Well, I think part of the problem for me is, in a good way, is, not in a good way, yeah, in a good way, I don't know, take it for what it is. We made, we voted on that, but yet you were caught up, you were caught up in all that at the same time this all happened around, the verbiage was together, and so I don't think we thought it through at the time, people. Wait, why, what, we didn't think it through, why? That's a joke, sir. That's a joke, okay? Go with it.
I have, I have, we have the capacity in our bylaws to vote through email, so I can do that tomorrow to confirm whether or not my board is willing to pay for it.
I'd, I'm like JR, I'd, I'd be willing to pay, to, to pay it for you, I mean.
I mean, the city's involved in this as much as the business owners. We were shut down, literally shut down, and our business owners got hurt. That's why I will personally support this, if I can, but there's no if I can, I will. We, we always talk, or we did during the last two years, we've gotta support our businesses, gotta support our businesses, but a better way to do it than say, okay, here we go, here's an event for you folks through the city, we believe in you, let's burn this thing down, and let's go on with good business in town.
And Josh, I don't have enough on my credit card for you, but I, okay.
Did we discuss, um, there was some discussion about, um, having it down by the river where the night glow is versus?
And that would be fabulous, I would love to do that, and I did talk with Dar at Link about it, and also Riley. And Riley's contention was that in the past, when they've done some burning to clear off the banks of the river of noxious weeds, that some ashes have floated up and done a little bit of damage to vehicles that are parked right there. And I talked with Dar about it, and he seemed to think that was legitimate as well. He did say that in the future, if we wanted to do something similar, that he has a metal flatbed trailer, that we could burn something on so that we would, we could get it far enough away from cars and also not be on cement, or I should say asphalt, which is what that parking lot is, and asphalt melts at 400 degrees. I really don't think this is gonna be 400 degrees, but we still need to use all safety precautions.
So, it's still going to be across from the library?
It will be at Butler Park.
Okay.
Any other questions?
So, this would be more closely related to putting up Christmas lights, wouldn't it? Because you're just using city labor to help promote a celebration, right?
That's how I viewed it when I initially made the recommendation.
Anyone else? Ms. Two, would you call the roll, please?
Travis Orbach?
Yes.
Larry Pratt?
Yes.
Gary Tellkamp?
Yes.
JR Huddleston?
Yes.
Linda Varbel?
Yes.
Hal Landville?
Yes.
Deborah Johnston?
Yes.
Bill Lukens?
Yes.
The motion passes, thank you. New business, item C, can I get a motion to approve and authorize the mayor to sign change order number one with Western Construction?
Make a motion to approve and authorize the mayor to sign change order number one with Western Construction, Inc., an increase of $5,435.39 to a new total contract amount of $280,562.59. The increase is the result of an adjustment for final quantities installed.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Can I get a motion to approve new business, item D, accept and authorize the mayor to sign the final review and acceptance of the construction hangar taxi lane extension?
Make a motion to accept and authorize the mayor to sign the final review and acceptance of the, of the construct hangar taxi lane extension, 383 feet by 25 feet and hangar approaches, non-AIP project completed by contractor Western Construction, Inc.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Can I get a motion to approve new business, item E, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the professional services agreement with K L J Engineering LLC, and remember that we struck the city's share approximately $33,500.
Make a motion to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the professional services agreement with K L J Engineering LLC for the design and construction administration and construction observation services for the AWAS III project at the airport at a total cost of $127,238.47, to be funded by the budgeted funds in 212-21200-45420.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Can I get a motion on new business, item F, 2024 automatic budget supplement of $1,433.68 to the additional sales tax fund?
Make a motion to approve 2024 automatic budget supplement of $1,433.68 to the additional sales tax fund services and fees, 212-21200-42200 for construction administration and construction costs of the 10-unit T-hanger taxi lane and site development project, reimbursement revenue received from AIP grant funding number 3-46-0020-15-2021.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Can I get a motion to approve new business, item G, a 2024 automatic budget supplement of $2,687.07 to the additional sales tax fund?
I make a motion to approve 2024 automatic budget supplement of $2,687. I make a motion to approve 2024 Automatic Budget Supplement of $2,687.07 to the Additional Sales Tax Fund Services and Fees, 212-21200-42200, for Construction Administration of the Hangar Taxi Lane and Approach Design and Construction Observation and Administration. Reimbursement Revenue Received from AIP Grant Fund Number 3-46-0022-0020-18-2024.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Onto our committee reports. Administrative and Finance, JR?
Admin Finance met on February 10th at 1:00 p.m. here at the Mueller Civic Center. In attendance were Mayor Nelson, Chamber President Joss Kopinski, Chief Norton, Assistant Finance Officer Ariel Bachman, Alderwoman Johnston, Admin Finance Chair JR Huddleston. Old Business, Number One. Discuss Safety Policy Review for Possible Changes Sent to Safety Chair in November, for, in November for review. The Safety Committee and City Administrator advised. Safety Manual has been reviewed, and it's a sound viable document with no further changes necessary. We remove this item from future agendas. New Business, Item One, Mayor Item. Enforcing Sign Ordinance. Some business owners are wanting to display signs at their establishment that are not allowed by our current ordinance. Mayor advised them to identify what passage in the ordinance that they're wanting to change with what verbiage they want in the ordinance. Members, Chamber stated they would assist in getting the information out. Number Two, Committee Member Items. Alderwoman Johnston addressed the wayfinding signs. Where are we with this? Mayor advised we need to get requests for bids put together and published. Number Three, Review Monthly Finance Officer Report. Review Given at the Last Council Meeting. Number Four, Chamber Request to Review Park Reservation Fees for 2025. After robust discussion with some wanting to waive fees if it is beneficial to the city, and others not waiving any fees in an attempt to show fairness to all, it was decided that more discussions necessary. Committee recommends placing this as a discussion-only item for the next council meeting, 218. Number Five, Per diem Rates. More review needed. Will continue discussion when, when at next meeting, when Misty returns. I don't know, I can't type her, anyway, when Misty returns. Number Six, SDPAA and Claims Associate Review Requested by Public Works after Citizen Complaint. Committee recommends continuing with SDPAA. Number Seven, 12881 Hot Brook Canyon Road, Property Tax Reduction Relief, Deannexation Request. No recommendations from this committee. Number Eight, PPE Clothing. City Administrator is proposing some changes, is proposing some changes, has obtained lists of PPE from each department forwarding to next meeting. Can I run that through again? It's City Administrator is proposing some changes, has obtained lists of PPE from each department forward to next meeting. I'm sorry, guys, this is tough tonight. Number Nine, Long Standing Event Holder Calendar Reservations for the City Park. Committee recommends resolving current conflicts with reserved events. Address Reservations for future events with long-standing events having priority. Forward to next meeting, discussion with City Administrator are necessary. We adjourned at 3:20. Next meeting, March 10th at 1:00 p.m. here at the Mueller Civic Center, subject to your questions and my clarifications.
Any questions for JR? You had mentioned wayfinding. I had sent out an email to Bill's request for agenda items for the next Public Works Meeting next Monday, and we'll be going over the wayfinding plans, take a look at the final design that ISG has, satisfy ourselves that all the signs have been identified, and then we'll, we'll be able to move forward from there.
And that will be presented to the council as well?
Once, yeah, once we've finalized everything. And then from there, once council, if council gets on board with it, then we have to submit to DOT and get their approval for where we want to have the signs, and then we can get to the point of order and then. Thank you, JR. Airport Advisory, Gary?
The Airport Advisory Committee will meet Thursday, March 6th at the airport at 8:30 a.m.
Thank you. Custer Fall River Regional Waste Management, Travis?
The Custer Fall River Regional Waste Management District Board members will next meet on Thursday, March 13th at 7:00 o'clock here at the Mueller Center.
Thank you. Historic Preservation, Deborah?
Historic Preservation met February 5th. There wasn't a quorum, and I haven't received the minutes of what was done, but there was mostly discussion on deterioration by neglect the, and the funds needed to be able to do something about that. And we do have a small delegation going up to Deadwood's Historic Preservation Commission meeting next week on the 26th to discuss those issues with them and hopefully ask them to adopt us as their sister city to help us with our issues, since they have been receiving historic preservation money for 36 years. I think it's time they help us out. And so they, we will be meeting next, March 5th at 5:00 p.m. here at the Mueller Center.
Any questions for Deborah?
Is that the consensus of the committee, or is that your consensus?
It's the consensus of the committee.
Okay, thank you. Now, the meeting you've talked about, Deborah, up in Deadwood tomorrow, Jaclyn and I are scheduled to have a meeting with our city administrator, or our, pardon me, Jaclyn, our former city administrator, to talk about the Deadwood Historic Group. I say possibly in Jaclyn's report to council at night, I'll talk a little bit, a little bit more about why we may or may not have that meeting tomorrow. But after we talk with, with Bob, then I'll have a conversation with you about that meeting.
Okay.
Evans Plunge Advisory, Linda?
Okay, the Evans Plunge Mineral Springs Advisory Committee met on February 13th, 2025, at noon. In attendance were myself, Kari Mullak, Tom Nas, Allison Ritterbush, and Jaclyn Kelsey. Our updates were on operations. Kari reported during the annual closure, we will be focusing on the ladies locker room floor, installing handicap rails in a couple of the changing stalls, installing new pad on the launch end of the swing rings. We have lost a couple of people at the front desk, lost two lifeguards, but replaced them. Lily will be conducting training with the new guards, and one will be cross-trained at the front desk. No new movement on hiring a new aquatics director as of today. On equipment, Tom reported that the wheelchair lift is up and running. There is a ramp and a wheelchair available to patrons if needed. If patrons need any assistance or need to report malfunctioning equipment, please communicate that to the individual at the front desk so that the facility is aware of it. On swim lessons, the Mommy and Me classes were full and will be ending before March 10th. With increased interest, they may be brought back at a later date. Allison reported that nine students have qualified for the state meets in Sioux Falls later this month. In the fitness area, Tom reported we may need to replace some equipment in the near future. This area has seen an increase in use since the January 1st, 2025, when the age level was raised. Monthly incidents per Kari were, there have been three incidents since the January meeting involving young individuals unable to recover their air when surfacing. Lifeguards responded, and after assessing each situation, life vests were offered. Jaclyn will be working with Kari to streamline the reporting process she has been using. On public comments, Jaclyn expressed concerns over exterior maintenance, exterior doors that need replaced, and the front facade issue. Importance is to be placed on needs as opposed to wants, placing safety issues first. Did you have anything else, Jaclyn?
No, Linda, thank you.
Okay. Due to the annual closure for maintenance and cleaning issues, March 10th through 23, we will have our next meeting on April 10th, 2025, at noon. We adjourned at 12:36 p.m. Any questions?
Yeah, I want to let you know, my little buddy, John, said to thank the plunge for fixing the handicap chair.
Okay. I think we're just going to close out that issue and, you know, just, we encourage, you know, the patrons to communicate with the front desk if there's any issues that they notice. So, thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Linda.
You're welcome.
Parks Recreation Beautification, Larry, Linda?
The Parks Recreation met February 5th at 2:00 p.m. here at the Mueller Center. In attendance were the mayor, city administrator, Gabby Martin, Deborah Johnston, Chris Katkey, Bart Sieg, Caitlin Mossit, Barb Walter, Jason Mizzley, Gerald Colligan, a lot of people, Jim Broscher, Karen Maston, Jason Gesh, Gail Pinkleton, Caroline Vetrasi, Cole Wellnitz, Mike Demming, Kelly Cumbaugh, myself, and Linda Varbel. In updates, Cemetery, we had no report. Parks, Bart rebuilding bleachers for use at the soccer field. Freedom Trail signs are up. The Mueller Civic Center in January was, was busy. The historic conference about, had 100 people in attendance. Three gymnastic meets. February has Golden West conducting an information conference. Switched to LED lighting in the annex vending machine culprit has been caught. It was caught on camera. Recreation, they're in the last, she is in the last months of winter rec activities with the 125 participants. The Mommy and Me swim lessons are full. Summer rec registration will be taking place shortly, looking at watercolor classes, gymnastics, swim lessons, theater, among others. Keep Hot Springs Beautiful, working on getting volunteers situated. They still have two bump-out areas available for adoption in front of City Hall and Sturtivens, if anybody's interested. In New Business, seasonal lighting and banners, light up our town. Karen Maston wondering if she needed to have a resolution to the council on the February meeting to obtain the banners they were proposing for the light posts throughout town. It was determined that they could continue with what they have been doing in the past years. Proposing, proposing red banners throughout the year, changing them to green for Sith activities. Keep hot. They wish to stick with snowflakes and purchase more snowflakes. Wrapping lights and garland around the post. They do still have a Sith account and will continue with it to purchase decorations. An electric box wrapout, bumpout signs, still working on design for the boxes. Presented a printout for the double-sided, double-sided signs for the bumpouts. They will be six by 18 and set low to the ground to give recognition to who has adopted that area. Jaclyn will look into a temporary sign permit is, if needed. The Mueller Center Soccer Field Improvements, Kelly Cumbaugh, Mike Demming, Jim Broscher from the school looking to work with the city to level out the soccer field, bring in topsoil and seed the field. It was suggested that the school find another area to play so that this work can take place and the grass seed has a chance to survive. We'll bring back, we'll bring this back to the March meeting. In Old Business, Butler Park, this golf course, Jason Gesh will work with Jaclyn to get more, get a more complete plan to present to the council. The Freedom Trail signage, Bart, all signs are up, so that matter is pretty much closed. That's what I heard. Public comment, JF Weedow was invited by Shedco to speak with us about the Burnt Cone festivities, March 8th, 2025. It was determined the entity we needed to speak with was a local fire department chief. Dryness may be a factor on this, and we may need to have a backup plan. Gerald Colligan gave an update on funds donated for repairs on the Centennial Park Fountain. He also questioned the size of the bleachers that are being restored, made the committee aware of scheduling conflicts with activities in Central Park, Centennial Park this year. Karen Maston added comments to this, stating the reservation system was unreasonable. The mayor, Mayo, mayor, suggested to them to come in, Linda did that, mayor, not me.
Sorry.
Suggested to them to come into City Hall to work out a resolution. The system has always been first come, first served, but this, but does, the council needs to recognize traditional events. Gerald also stated that he would like to see a multi, multipurpose concession building placed in the center of the fields at Butler Park. Underground water sewer lines may prevent that from happening. The meeting adjourned at 3:20 p.m. Next meeting, March 5th, 2025, 2:00 p.m. here at the Mueller Center. Public is welcome.
Linda, Jack, anything to add?
No, nothing, Dad.
Any questions for Linda or Larry?
Did you say the, the committee is recommending the school find somewhere else to play?
Yes.
Okay. As a permanent solution?
No.
Oh, just temporarily until the-
Just temporary, until they get the grass seed put down and get started working on the field. It has been suggested in the past, but because of the scheduling conflict, they wanted to get in there and start kicking the ball around sooner than expected.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you. Planning and Zoning, Deborah?
Planning and zoning meets tomorrow evening, 6:00 p.m. at City Hall.
Thank you. Public Safety, Bill, JR?
It's me again. Public Safety met on Thursday, February 6th, 2025, at 1:00 p.m. here at the Mueller Civic Center. Members present were Alderman Bill Lukens, JR Huddleston, Alderwoman Deborah Johnston, Alderman Gary Tellkamp, Mayor Bob Nelson, PD Chief Ross Norton, Seat Administrator Jaclyn Kelsey, Fall River County Emergency Manager Darko, Assistant Fall River County Emergency Manager Gary Baker, Ryan Wall, School Board Safety Committee, Doug Huntrod, VA, Andrea Powers, Shedco Director, Kylie Cumbaugh, the Hot Springs High School Superintendent. Members of the public? None. Adoption of Agenda, a new business item to discuss. The proposed end-of-construction celebration was added. Communications from the public were none. Update from the Police Department. PD will begin procuring equipment associated with the Justice Assistance Grant. South Dakota DOT notified the chief that they denied the request to make Highway 18 a consistent 45 mile per hour based on the results from the use of their standard speed limit evaluation tool. This was on Highway 18 from Taco John's to the top of University Avenue. They denied that.
Oh, the truck bypass area?
No, we don't have a bypass, but yes.
It's not a bypass anymore, so we're not supposed to call it that, I guess.
Oh, okay.
But it was, it's that roadway, correct?
That roadway.
We'd asked to see if we could change it to 45, then the state said no. Old Business, Review Status of Action Item List. No updates were available on the open action item list issues. New Business, End of Construction Celebration Proposal. The committee heard the specific planning components of the proposed traffic cone burning event presented by Andrea Powers. The committee felt all safety issues had been addressed and supported the proposal. Mrs. Powers was instructed to submit a completed application for the use of city resources to the city administrator. Number Two, Brian Wall, representing the School Board Safety Committee, requested the Safety Committee consider the following items. Can a traffic light at University Avenue and 19th Street be adjusted to be a true traffic light at certain high pedestrian times to aid in safe pedestrian crossings of University Avenue? The street department will be consulted to determine if this is possible. Item B, a request to change the lane designation southbound 16th Street at University Avenue and the right lane of- and the right lane of westbound University approaching east on 16th Street was requested. The committee agreed with the request and will pursue signage and lane markings. It is felt this change will enhance traffic flow during high traffic times. Number three, review safety issues associated with proposed July 4 Derby event dropped as this is not a public safety committee issue. Number four, the committee discussed the various existing and proposed emergency use agreements for the Mueller Center and other city assets. The goal is to ensure all agreements are current and the pertinent information is communicated to Fall River Emergency Management for indexing prior to 2025, long land fire, potential flood period. We adjourned at 2:08 PM, and the next meeting is Thursday, March 6th, 1:00 PM here at the Mueller Civic Center, subject to your questions.
Bill, anything you'd like to add?
Not a thing.
Any questions, council? Thank you. Public Works, Bill, Al?
Public Works will meet Monday, February 24th, 1:00 PM at Mueller Center Conference Room, and just to note, this is a one-time day change only.
Thank you. Southern Hills Golf Course, the tee time reservations have been down the last couple of days. And the next time the committee meets will be dependent on the weather. Once the weather allows them to open up and start having golf out there again, then we'll start meeting regularly. City Administrator, Jaclyn?
I just have a few things. To quickly touch on the public safety recommendations that were made, those traffic signs for the school, those were ordered, so we can expect to see placement on those soon, but no street markings will be happening anytime soon.
No.
And then my other update is that we have set a date and time for the annual burning of the brush. It will be at 4:00 AM tomorrow. So Wednesday, February 19th, 4:00 AM, we're gonna burn it down.
I have a question.
Yes.
Are you bringing hot dogs and marshmallows?
No. I don't know if I'm going to be awake enough to remember any of that.
Me either.
But all the proper businesses have been notified, and I did talk to Fall River Health Services today as well, and there are no concerns there, so.
Cool.
So who was it I was going to get back to? Debra, as far as the meeting that's been scheduled between Jaclyn, Bob and I, that was previously scheduled for 9:00 tomorrow morning, given that we're going to be out at the landfill at 4:00 AM this morning, I'm not sure whether that meeting will happen at 9:00 or not. My hope is, my desire, my efforts are going to be towards it not happening at 9:00, and I'll reach out to Bob and see if maybe we can do it in the afternoon.
That's very understandable.
Any other questions for Jaclyn? Misty, Finance Officer report?
I have nothing to report.
All right. As far as Mayor's report, I have one update. Council and the public may have noticed that snow plowing is happening a little different this year. Where we can, we're plowing to the center of the streets, and that's an effort to recognize that over the years, we've had a lot of requests from folks to not plow in their driveways. So we're trying to plow to the center where we can, and we'll see how that works. It's still a work in progress. The city crews are working it out themselves, but when it's light snow like this, it's a little easier to plow to the center than what it might be as the snow gets deeper and heavier. But it's a work in progress, and we'll see how it goes, and we'll see how the public responds to it.
I love it. I love it.
And Mayor, I'd like to add to that comment, because I have to get up early and drive around early. I have noticed that a lot of people have moved out of the way, and so there's a lot of snow that has been moved. So, yeah, I'd give a shout out to the townspeople for doing that. Thank you.
We did have one call at City Hall today that does not like plowing to the center, but I've heard more folks that do. Again, we'll keep trying it on and see how the public responds to it. With that, can I get a motion to go into executive session?
Make a motion, we go into executive session in accordance with South Dakota Codified Law 1-25-23 contractual matters.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. There will be no action taken after we come out of executive session. I hope it won't be too long for those who are waiting for loved ones.